We're looking at an 18 to 24 month waiting period.
Sidewalks. This is sidewalks.
So, so we-
It's Monday.
Well, now we got the answer for leafs, so, um, thank you.
It's Monday. We will be getting to a question about leaf collection. And Assistant City Manager Moore will be here to talk about sidewalks.
Good afternoon. Again, I'm Michael Moore. I'm Assistant City Manager slash Director of Transportation. We would be able to get started on these sidewalks. We, as noted in the budget note, we already have one set of sidewalks that are on the petition program, a program to go under design this year. We would certainly use outside consultants to bring the next set in. And we would go down that list in the priority order of what we've got there. So we would be able to get them started. Would we be able to execute them all? Probably not, but we would get them started.
Councilmember Melton?
This sidewalk petition funding issue and backlog, it's something that we have been dealing with since my term on council and I know prior. These are folks that went through the process that was in existence at the time, were promised sidewalks, and it's just not happened. And so I know that now we are looking at coming up with a new way to do sidewalks. But in the interim, we have this backlog. And so I would be in favor of moving this forward, clearing out this backlog, delivering what was promised. Even if it doesn't break ground right away, having the funding earmarked for it would be a huge movement forward. And we should get them built as soon as possible. But I'd like to move this forward. And then the next step would be coming up with a better way to do the sidewalk program.
Mayor Protem Stewart, then Councilmember Knight.
Thank you. I was just gonna ask, I was a little confused by the backup on this item to the exact amount we're talking about. Because there was the sidewalks and then there was street improvements.
That is correct. So we have two items here. The petition sidewalk program totals about 4.1. If we do those sidewalks there on Valley Drive, we would deduce that again back down about three and a half. Street petition projects, which in the past have a component in which we assess for, those total, I believe, about 8.6 million dollars if I refer to this. So if we're talking about just sidewalks, we would be at a 3.6 million dollar kind of deficit there to get that caught up, 8.6 to do them all. And I would like to note that a lot of the sidewalk, I mean, the street petition projects are actually projects that are built out so we can get sidewalks involved. You know, our policy now does not allow us to, doesn't permit us to do sidewalks that don't have, on streets that don't have curb and gutter. This would allow us to be able to get curb and gutter in so we could do that, so.
Councilmember Knight?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I asked for this and I appreciate this, this information. Just to be a little more, put a little finer point on that. The, the street improvement petition piece of it, which comes to by itself 8.6 plus million.
Yes, sir, my numbers.
For each individual project, it's beyond sidewalks, correct? It's gutter, sidewalk, gutter, and then what, and then street widening, minimizing, or is it just per project?
Councilmember, it would be per project. In some cases, it would be there to bring some things up. But usually it is just to get the, it's also to get the curb and gutter in, to redo the, you know, rework the street and the pavement itself. And then for us to also get sidewalks and sidewalk improvements in, so.
So it's sort of sidewalk plus?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, so the total would be the four, four million, 78,000, 78,000 plu- plus the eight million for the, for both of them together. So over 12, 13 million, about?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And then, so as the options, which I think we have not discussed, the choices y'all give is either ARPA funding or general capital reserve funding are the two options that y'all propose.
Yes, sir.
I'll, I'll go ahead and, and propose bringing it out of the ARPA funding. But I'd love to hear from you, the manager, as to what you would rather it come from as well.
Actually, can we wait one minute?
Okay.
Councilmember Fort had her hand raised, and then Councilmember Cox. So let's just get the questions out, and then I will ask, I was gonna ask you to explain what the recommendations would be for paying for this.
Well, actually, you and Councilmember Knight stole my question because I wanted to hear a little bit more about the potential for the ARPA funding to fund the project. So that was gonna be my question.
Okay, Councilmember Cox?
So those streets that lack curb and gutter, so when we put in curb and gutter, is there stormwater sewer there, or is that additional?
No, that would be included in that cost.
It is included. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So thank you, Mayor. We have two options for funding sidewalks and street improvements. And those are ARPA as well as our general capital reserves as we close out the end of the fiscal year. We don't anticipate taking all of the money out of ARPA because there have been some previously communicated priorities that you all have mentioned to us that we should reserve funding for. So we still have that money set aside. But in addition to that, as we close out the end of the fiscal year on paper, on the 30th of June, we don't technically close it out on the books because sales tax we're on a couple of months, a couple and a half months behind. So as we close out the fiscal year, September, late September, mid to late September, we'll be able to figure out exactly what those cost savings are for the year. And we anticipate being able to pay for the rest of the sidewalks out of that. But we do not want to deplete the ARPA funding because as you all know, there's so many program guidelines and regulations for that money that we don't want to spend all of that on that and then not be able to cover some of the other larger capital projects that you all have mentioned.
How much do we anticipate having in reserve?
Oh, wow. Just based on third quarter financials, I'll bring Allison Bradshaw to the podium, who's our CFO. And we anticipate that we will be in pretty good financial standing. However, she's moving slow today. However, we do anticipate speaking to some of the other budget notes, so we don't want to take all of that. So as we get through budget notes five and six today, we're gonna, I'm gonna request that you all allow me a little bit of leeway to spend some of that money to address some of the pay issues as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, hi, Allison Bradshaw here with the Finance Department. Sorry, I was working, walking up very slowly. As the city manager stated, this is a calculation that gets done, and unfortunately, we're still quite a ways away. It is more than what our revenues over our expenditures are on an annual basis. We have to look at other things like cash, et cetera. It is a formula directly from the LGC. And as the city manager stated, it will be late fall before that number is looked at. But as she said, our sales tax numbers do continue to come in very high compared to where we expected our budget to be. So at this point, I don't really know that I have a firm number to offer, so.
So let me ask this question then. When we vote on the budget, we will have some uncertainty as to how much reserve funding we will have. So at the time we vote, can we offer direction to this, to all of you saying, "We'd like to do this, but come back to us with the," because we don't know what we're dealing with right yet.
Right.
Sure.
That would be a great suggestion, that this could be a Priority One funding when the capital reserve calculation is completed.
Okay. All right, thank you. And I hope you're feeling better. Councilmember Knight?
So just so I understand, so once that is, the capital reserve funding number is figured out in the fall, it sounds like, correct? Then we, then we would, we could go ahead and prove it now based on what that number is coming back. And then at that time, see how much we actually have, and then do the final approval?
We provide direction that this would be a priority, then they would come back to us.
And then that would be immediate, then that money could be, start going in immediately. Okay, thank you.
Other questions on this budget note?
Just to be clear, so that's what we're gonna do?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes. Well, we, we take a vote next week. So next, the 13th is when we actually will vote on this, all of this, including-
That's what's going before us next week.
Yeah, after what we hear from the public hearing as well.
Okay, budget note number two. Council had asked for an analysis of looking at development and the impacts of development using vehicle miles traveled as a basis for evaluating traffic impacts as opposed to the current TIA or Traffic Impact Analysis methodology. Council had previously received a background memo on this that is included in the agenda materials. And the budget note number two just identifies that if you wanted to pursue that, the estimated cost to secure consulting services to help develop a VMT approach would be about $150,000. Happy to answer any questions.
Mayor Protem Stewart?
Thank you. I'm very interested in seeing this move forward and would recommend we use general capital reserves for this. It's a one-time cost, and it's something that could really change how we do development in our city in a really kind of climate-focused way. So I'm very much wanting to see that move forward.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, budget note number three. Back to leaf collection enhancements. So, long history here. Many, many years ago, the city did conduct three leaf collection passes in each cycle, each seasonal cycle. Some years ago, that was reduced to two. The current, the current approach of two passes throughout the city each leaf season. And the impact of weather and labor and identifying employees to help with that undertaking is an annual issue. So what we have done is outlined some different approaches if council were interested in pursuing alternatives to leaf collection.
We have any questions? Councilmember Fort?
I guess I have something of a general one. We just did the, the green yard waste collection bins. And so would you still have to do additional leaf collections in addition to using those bins?
So if, if a homeowner put their leaves in the yard waste cart, that would be collected we, on a weekly basis. But what we're talking about is loose leaf collection, so that's where leaves are placed at the curb. And we have the specialized equipment that comes along and vacuums those, vacuums those up.
I understand that, but I thought the purpose of the bins was to kind of decrease us having to do the additional curbside loose leaf collection. But I guess not.
No, it's a, really a replacement collection method for collecting yard waste. So it's gonna reduce both the time and eventually the number of crew, crew that it takes to do that by having the carts at the curb versus piles of bags, et cetera.
And so Councilmember Fort, that program also addresses yard shavings, clippings, yard debris, not just leaves. So it wouldn't be a replacement or a total enhancement to the current leaf collection program.
I was gonna say, with, with the new containers, I really like just Option One to see how this next year goes before we kind of move forward. Because if you try to do too many new, new parts at one time, you don't know if something goes wrong, which ones needs to be fixed. And I think a lot of people now they have these containers, they will more likely use them, even though it's bi-weekly. So I think with the current schedule, plus the current leaf collection, yard waste collection, I think we'll be fine. But at least see how it goes.
And we know that there's a problem with the trucks, so. Thank you. We good on that?
If, Mayor?
Councilmember Buffkin?
Thank you. I requested this based on a lot of feedback from the district. And, you know, I know this was a challenging year, something of a perfect storm. I'm fine with trying the Option One. You know, this is sort of an illustration of why it doesn't approve. It's, you know, long lead times to get equipment. We got lots of changes going on. But I'd be willing to go along with Option One, and thank you, Mr. Branch, for suggesting that.
Okay. All right, thank you. Budget Note Four?
So Budget Note Number Four, council asked, we bring back the adjustments to city council pay. So just as a reminder, last year, council had appointed the study group to study this issue. The study group did come back with recommendations last year. We have outlined in the budget note what those amounts would be. One thing I would highlight is that the study group, so traditionally, the mayor pro tem has had a discrete salary amount. The study group recommendations did not include that, so staff has worked that into the recommendation on the assumption that council would want to maintain that.
I think that's appropriate. Any other questions? Okay, Budget Note Five then?
Okay, Budget Note Number Five and Number Six, this is the Public Safety, and we have the presentation up. And so just as a reminder, council had asked that staff look at the two proposals from the associations. And before we get to that, we're gonna review with what is actually included in the proposed budget. So Budget Note, first we have the Budget Note Number Five is a comparison between what's in the proposed budget and the proposal from the Raleigh Police Protective Association and the firefighters, and the cost differentials between those. So as a reminder, in the current, in the manager's proposed budget for FY '23, the following is an overview. We have new pay ranges for public safety employees based on the Wake County average salary plus 6%, and the cost of that is an additional 1.7 million dollars. We're also proposing, the proposed budget also proposes to increase the merit adjustments that are available to employees at a cost of 4.5 million dollars. And just as a reminder, the merit components of salary adjustment is based on performance. And the eligible percentage that an individual employee is eligible for is based on where they are located in the pay range. So we have, we also increased the merit percentages from what we briefed council on earlier in the spring to what is actually contained in the proposed budget. So those merits increased from 4% and 2%, respectively, to 5% and 3%. So there's an increase there. And the difference there is where the employee is in the pay range for their particular job classification. If they are below the midpoint, they will, they are eligible for a 5% merit. And if they are above the midpoint of that, of an individual job classification pay range, they are eligible for a 3% merit adjustment. The proposed budget also proposes to bring forth an earlier implementation for the public safety employees. So they will receive their salary adjustments and merit and whatever they're eligible for, for merit, in August. Whereas the rest of the city employees, that, that action takes place later in the year during the month of October. So what we have there, oh, and also, as a reminder, council authorized a 2% cost of living adjustment back in the month of April, was effective last month, okay? So that 2% across the board is encompassed by these additional merit amounts that are included in the proposed budget. So for police, looking at this chart here, the cost of living adjustment was 1.4 million dollars. Merit is an additional 2.9 millions. When we, when we raise the pay ranges, any employee who is below the current bottom of a pay range will be brought up to the minimum amount. So the cost to do that as we raise the pay ranges is 1.2 million for a total cost for police of 5.5 million that is included in the city manager's proposed budget. On the fireside, the cost of living adjustment already in place was 980,000 dollars. The cost of the merit and the increased merit amounts of 5% and 3% is 1.6 million. And the cost to bring employees who are below the current ranges up to the new minimum of a pay range is an additional half a million dollars for a total of 3.1 million dollars in the city manager's proposed budget for the fire department. And I'll pause there for any questions.
Do we have any questions so far? Please continue, Lou.
So that's the, what is included in the proposed budget. This next slide here is the proposal from the Police Association, which involved, I'm sorry, lost track of where we are. This is, this is the new pay ranges for what's included in the city manager's proposed budget. So on the, the column on the left is the current minimum and maximum for the various ranks within the police department, okay? The proposed budget proposes to increase those minimums. That's the chart on the right. So the minimum salaries for a police officer, starting at the top on the right hand, on the right side of the chart, will go from 42,300 to 50,301. And these ranges are increased respectively as you move through the ranks. The recruits will start at the entry level of the police officer pay. And the only thing we want to highlight here is the only salary that is not adjusted by what's in the proposed budget is the rank of sergeant because the, it was determined that that is currently a market competitive pay range for police, for the rank of police sergeant. So now.
And just one point to add to Lou's presentation. The two changes on the police officer and senior officer obviously are increases. And when staff went back and looked at where we're having the most recruitment and retention issues, looking at the last year's data outside of retirements, who's leaving? The police chief has pointed out that that senior officer is somewhere in between four to five or to seven or eight years of service is where we're losing folks. So that's why we were really intentional about addressing that. And obviously, you all know that we are struggling like the rest of the country on the recruitment side as well. So we've bumped up that entry level pay 8,000 dollars. And again, that is reflective of us being 6% higher than the Wake County average for the upcoming fiscal year. Sergeants on the police side and captains on the fireside were already addressed a couple of years ago. And it still remains a position that is really highly competitive in the market. However, we were able to adjust the maximum sum, which allows for greater earning potential for those who choose not to or do not promote up. So there is a greater earning potential of 10,000 dollars on the sergeant range, three on the lieutenant range. So the earning capacity and earning potential has also gone up incrementally to reflect the change on the front end.
So we'll move here from the police pay plan to the proposed fire pay plan. Again, this is, these are the pay ranges and the minimums and maximums that are included in the city manager's proposed budget. Again, the table on the left is the current minimums and maximum pay, pay rates for each of the ranks in the fire department. And the table on the right is what is proposed in the FY '23 proposed budget. So that is moving, just moving the minimum salary for a firefighter from 39,200 to a minimum of 46,540. And as the city manager just mentioned, this does not address a change to the pay rate for fire captains. So the, again, those are, the current pay range is competitive in the marketplace, which is the city's philosophy of having a market-based pay, paced pay plans. So now we'll move on to the cost for the association proposal. The RPPA proposal builds on top of the city's 5.5 million pay plan for police. And they requested the following increases, a 10% salary increase for open-range sworn personnel, which are police officers, the ranks of police officers, senior officer, detectives and sergeant. And then a 3% to 5% salary increase for the broadband sworn personnel for the ranks of lieutenants and captains. A secondary component of that request was to look at having officers, the ability to choose between being paid overtime in lieu of compensatory time. Estimated cost of that is 3.3 million. And the table there outlines the cost calculation. The first component is the open range, a 10% adjustment, was a cost of 5.1 million dollars. And then for the broadband pay ranges of lieutenants and captains, there's a 3%, 4% and 5%, because that was what was asked to be costed out, a range between 3% and 5%. So we've done each of those. So the total cost between 5.3 and 5.5 million to implement, additional cost to implement the proposal from the Police Protective Association. Questions?
I was gonna wait until we got through.
Okay. So next we'll move on to the proposal from the firefighters, Local 548. The Local 548 proposal included a seven-step pay structure, whereas there are only five job classifications at hand. So the proposal focuses on moving the starting pay for firefighters to 52,969. It also requested 4% pay increases for each step in a pay range, and then 10% raises for all employee promotions. So this cost estimate, I just pointed out that third bullet, the 10% raises, this cost estimate does not include that because we don't really have an ability to forecast what that might be. But we have in the table there, Row A is the cost to bring all of the, all of those positions to the new minimum, the cost of 5.5 million dollars. And then what you, further analysis is to bring, based on the new pay range, to bring everybody up to the new minimum, there's an additional cost of 10.6 million dollars in order, if we were to implement the, the pay structure as proposed by the association. So next we'll compare the pay plans and the proposed budget again. For police and fire, totals 8.6 million dollars. What's in the budget, police is an additional, is 5.5 million for police and 3.1 million for fire employees. The police proposal totals a range between 14.1 and 14.3 million dollars. So we have the FY '23 pay plan at 5.5. The increases as recommended by the association between a range of 5.3 to 5.5. And the compensation converted to overtime, the estimate for that is an additional 3.3 million dollar impact to the budget. On the firefighter side, the Local 548 proposal totals between 5.5 million and 10.6 million, additional dollars in the budget. Again, the cost to bring everybody to the new, or the proposed minimums would be 5.5 million. And then the cost to place everybody at the next highest step after you revise the pay ranges is an additional 10.6 million. So, Mayor, that might be a place to pause there and talk about the proposals from the associations, which is Budget Note Number Five. And then we can move on to Budget Note Six, or we can cover Budget Note Six and-
Do we have any additional comments before we open it up to questions? Okay, we'll combine them together then. Councilmember Cox, do you have a question?
Yes, regarding this slide. So if we total, worst-case scenario is if we total the RPPA proposal and the firefighters' proposal, am I correct in assuming that total is 24.9 million?
Yes, that's correct.
And that would be compared to 8.6 million?
Yep.
So the difference is about 16 million, a little more. So if I did the calculations correctly, that would equate to about a two-cent property tax.
One cent is 70, about, in the neighborhood of two cents.
Okay. We can come back to that after you continue your presentation.
Other questions?
Any other questions? Okay.
Okay, we'll move on to Budget Note Number Six, which is where Councilmember Buffkin requested an analysis of how much it would cost to provide a 10% increase to all sworn police and uniformed fire positions and on top of what's already included in the proposed FY '23 budget. So the cost for implementing a 10% increase for both departments, 18.0 million dollars. And if council wanted to consider one or the other, the, the cost of 10% increase for sworn police positions, that's 11.4 million dollars. And implementing for all uniformed fire employees, the cost is 6.6 million dollars for a total of 18.0 million dollars on, so the, the cost of the 10%, 9.4 million. What's already in the proposed budget is 8.6. So the total cost for a 10% increase for public safety, police and fire would- So the total cost for a ten percent increase for public safety, police and fire would be eighteen million dollars. So again, the funding options, if council wanted to consider any of these adjustments, really only have two options there. One is to identify categories of expenditures or priority areas of recurring general fund reductions within the proposed budget. Second alternative, as Councilmember Cox just alluded to, would be an adjustment to the ad valorem property tax rate to cover the additional costs of the pay increases. We did want to, before we move on, we did want to revisit the living wage issue because that does keep coming back up. And I have a, three slides here that council, was first shared with council back in the spring work session in, in the month of April. Just a reminder for everyone of what a living wage is, it's not the same as a minimum wage. It is, focuses on a minimum standard of living based on a specific geographic area. When calculating what is a living wage for a specific geographic area, you're typically not factoring in market-based pay factors. There's also several different ways to arrive at calculating a living range. There's no one standard to follow. And generally speaking, it does not consider the value of employer-paid benefits, specifically health insurance, the cost of that to an employee. Oftentimes that's included, but it's not universally included in calculating a living wage. So this is how the city of Raleigh has been calculating the living wage over the last several years. Eligibility, our full-time employees working on a regular schedule, part-time employees who are typically paid an hourly rate are not eligible for the living wage calculation. And the formula is based on, again, an annual salary. It is not calculated as an hourly rate. It's based on the universal living wage and using a four-year average of fair market rents, assuming a one-bedroom rent apartment, the cost of a one-bedroom apartment rent. It does recognize when the city calculates the living wage, the value of the health insurance to the employee. And the, and in doing this exercise, the calculation sets, the goal is to set an annual earnings floor or a minimum for the living wage. The city is also committed to annually reviewing what is the value or the dollar amount of a living wage, which we have done each year since we started looking at this in FY eighteen. It's actually in January twenty seventeen that City Council adopted a living wage policy, again, as that applies to all permanent, full-time employees who are paid an annual salary. And the living wage adjustment, as you can see there on the slide, has been increased each year. Starting off in FY twenty-eighteen, the value of the living wage was an annual salary of twenty-eight point six thousand dollars. And in the proposed budget, that has been increased to thirty-seven, eight hundred and fifty dollars annually for the living wage. So we'll pause there and take any questions that council might have about any of this information.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Cox?
I don't really have a question. I do have a comment. I don't know if this is the appropriate time to make a comment or not. All right, then I'll go ahead. Of course, we are all very much aware of the tragedy in Uvalde, Texas. And, and just since that time, we've had our own shooting in Optimist Park and lockdown of a nearby school. Nationwide, we've had more than two hundred mass shootings in this country since the first of the year. And I saw a report that we've had over two hundred credible threats of mass violence in North Carolina that have been thwarted by police departments. We live in difficult times and, and these figures don't even include things like the normal run-of-the-mill crimes of violence and rape and break-ins and thefts and so forth. And it also doesn't take into consideration the impact on our fire departments and the need for fire safety and within our cities. I don't think a day goes by that I drive on the city streets and I see a fire truck go by. And so there's, there's clearly a, a big need. So for me, the question is budget priorities. And when I look at this and I see that, you know, I've been working for seven years trying to bring wages up to a level so that we have a professional fire and police department. And, and a professional fire and police department is our departments that our citizens can rely on for guaranteed protection. And to me, the two cents is well worth that expense, that cost, in order to get us to where we need to be. So for this budget, I would support increasing our property taxes, two cents. That's what I would vote for if I were to increase our property taxes is two cents to help bring our fire and police departments up to where we need to ensure the professionalism of a growing city going forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Cox, can I ask for some clarification? The city manager's proposed budget is at two cents tax increase. Are you advocating for an additional two cents?
I think, and I've communicated this with the city manager, that there are a number of things within the city budget that are expenses that perhaps shouldn't be there this year. For example, we have a hundred and seventy million dollars budgeted for the new municipal building. And that would be something that I would consider removing from the budget in order to pay for increases for our police and fire departments. And, and there are other issues. We just spoke very much about moving forward with sidewalks for some eight million dollars. And I would prioritize our public safety over our sidewalks. So I think there are opportunities in the budget that we can remove costs in order to be able to, be able to pay for these expenses for public safety.
If, if you could come to our next meeting with concrete, if anybody has any concrete suggestions, please bring them to our meeting on the thirteenth. Councilmember Buffkin?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd, I'd like to see that too, because I've read the budget and I don't think there's a lot of fat in there. And I don't see a lot of opportunity to cut anything from the budget. And meanwhile, families are getting squeezed, inflation is going up and gas prices and all the things. And we're looking already at a pretty substantial tax increase this year. So I gotta think there's some room for compromise. And to be clear, I'd like to do all the things that we've seen in this presentation. But here in the real world, we have to balance the costs. And where I see the compromise is bringing firefighters up to minimum pay, which I think is just an additional two and a half million over the manager's proposal and what we have. But correct me if I'm understanding that wrong. And, and then at least get started on what the police officers have proposed. Fourteen million's a big number. We can cut a lot of stuff out of the budget for fourteen million dollars. And again, I don't think there's a whole lot of room to cut. On the police side, I would like to see some more options, manager, on the comp time versus overtime. You know, for example, if, if, if we knew that, say, the average officer worked fifty hours of overtime, well, maybe we would look at a number somewhere around that and pay for the first fifty hours overtime instead of comp time. I, I think there's some ways to work this. And, you know, might be, you know, if we can't do that in this budget, then I'd like to keep looking at it for the future and, and maybe find some way to make some progress on that. I certainly understand the request and desire to have hard money instead of future payments or, you know, vacation days. So, but, but that may be something that we have to take up at, at another time in light of the challenges we're facing. But I do think the, that bringing up firefighters to minimum is appropriate. You know, in a city like this, it's hard to imagine asking people to go do this difficult work for less than the fifty-two thousand that they've proposed. So I'd like to do that. I don't think it's gonna hurt too much. And I'd like to, I'd like to move ahead with as much as the, of the police raises as we think we can do. You know, I'm just seeing these numbers today, so I don't have a specific number in mind. But again, I'd like to do all of this balanced with the pain that we know everybody's feeling with rising costs. But I think there's some room for compromise here and I'd, I'd like to see us pursue that.
So just as a point of clarification, you're asking staff to go back to see what the entry for firefighters to fifty-two thousand would look like? Am I correct?
Well, I, I mean, I think that's a good starting pay. It's an improvement over what we've got. What I'd like to see in our budget is that we incorporate the Raleigh firefighters' proposal about bringing up to minimums.
To their proposed minimum of fifty-two. Because what happens with that, though, is every other rank shifts. So it's not just that one. That's the entry level for starting out since we removed the, the recruit classification. But what it also does is that impacts police. We have a market-based system and the two are different in the market. So to make that adjustment on the fire side, we can't do it in isolation without also addressing the police side. So if, if your question is to look at fifty-two as entry for fire, then that means the resulting entry for police has to be more than that because we have adopted a market-based system. And as a result of that, we have a market survey that dictates what our market competitiveness looks like on an annual basis, as well as what entry level and maximum ranges of pay for each particular rank that we have.
Yeah, I understand all that. Be glad to look at the numbers. But let me ask you this, manager, do I have this right? So we've got, with the proposed budget, we've got a, I'm sorry, an increase in firefighters' salaries that would cost the city three point one million. What the firefighters' association proposed for the row A, bring up to minimums is five point five. So am I understanding that right? That's just a two, two million dollar difference, two and some change?
On top of what's proposed, yes. But again, that system is based on a four percent step, and that is not our approved pay administration system. So it's just not a generic four percent, four percent increase each step or each year of performance. Depending upon where you are in the range currently, once we establish that minimum level of pay, up to the midpoint, every person that's in those three or four steps below the midpoint would get five percent. So you can't just, it's not, you just don't apply a four percent increase each step. And that's what their proposed policy did. So we can't, it's not just a clear, simple answer as a two point one million or two point two million. Because we would have to go back and build the system to reflect up to the midpoint, five percent, not four percent. And then after there, three. Because if we were to do four percent across the board for all non-broadband positions, then that's what gets us to that ten million dollars, can't remember off the top of my head, figure it was that Lou just mentioned a few minutes ago.
And Madam Manager, might, maybe we can bring up the chart again.
Yeah.
Javier, if you can bring up the PowerPoint.
So we have an approved and an adopted pay system. And so to do incremental steps, it has to coincide with the approved pay system that we have. And to just do incremental percentage increases, it doesn't align with the pay system. So we'd have to start over and do a different pay system if we're gonna do just a four percent, which if I'm not mistaken, is what was proposed in the firefighters' proposal. And to do that, because we have a market competitive system, we also would then have to automatically adjust the police side because the positions are not valued the same in the market for pay administration.
Councilmember Melton?
For purposes of just trying to understand Councilmember Buffkin's question and city manager's response, I read the firefighter proposal to have, well, there's three bullets on here. Move starting pay to fifty-two, four percent increases each step in pay range, ten percent ranges for, raises for employees. I think, Councilmember Buffkin, you were asking about just bullet one, the fifty-two, and then what impact that would have, not applying the four, not, I think Councilmember Buffkin's asking about point one, just the fifty, and how would that play into all this, this chart and everything?
If we were to do that and not look at the entire system, which is what we do, we would create some additional compression. Because if you look at that entry level pay moving to fifty, well, that's on the police side.
That's, that's the police side. I was gonna, I was gonna take a minute here to remind everybody of what we're talking about. So in the proposed budget, the current, for, for the rank of police officer, the new proposed minimum is fifty thousand, three hundred, one dollars. On the fire side, that goes, the new proposed minimum for firefighter rank is forty-six, five, forty. And the association has proposed fifty-two, nine, six, nine, which we have calculated the cost of that at five point five million dollars, an additional five point five million dollars to move the firefighters to the proposed minimum of fifty-two thousand, nine, sixty-nine.
Yes, so to answer the question, again, we don't have the chart to show it. The way that it's proposed would mean the firefighter starting pay would be fifty-two. Each of the resulting ranks would automatically have to adjust because of the compression and leapfrogging that would happen. So we typically try not to do one step without looking at the entire system because we've, we've seen what the unintended consequences are when we do a one-off. And so it would be my recommendation, if we're gonna look at it, we do away with the entire system and start over, which, not saying that's my recommendation, but I don't know that we can pick one position to address and not be able to look at all of them because each affects and builds upon each other.
Councilmember Ford?
So I guess as an additional point of clarification, what you're also saying, Madam City Manager, is if you were to make the comparison and using the higher numbers for the firefighters, you'd have to go back and readjust for RPD as well because of the, so it would, you just can't look at that one line item. You've gotta look at everything comprehensively, is what I'm understanding you to say.
Absolutely.
And that, going back to when we made these, this new salary adjustments back in twenty-seventeen, after we did a market study, we had directed staff at that time to do a market-based system. Now, we did make that mistake of putting in funding for different categories without addressing all categories. And I think that that is something that we learned from. We don't want to do that again. So I'm just, I'm just saying that if we are following our study and our policies, then we would have to go back and readjust all police. It was Councilmember Knight, then Melton, and then Buffkin.
Go ahead.
Answer that specifically.
Go ahead.
Couple things. First, back to Councilor Cox's comments, I just wanna make sure that we're comparing apples to apples, right? One-time expense items versus long-term expense items. So we can't, can't do that. But, so maybe I was thinking about this differently, but looking at the ten percent increase proposal, I thought that would be ten percent from the current, not from ten percent over the proposed plan that the managers brought forward. So I guess that's what I was, when, when I was looking at this, I was confused because I thought we were, we were gonna be looking at ten percent from current as, as opposed to ten percent over proposed. So, so I'm having to sort of recalculate now that the ten percent is over the proposed plan. I'm not sure if that's even what was desired, but I thought that was indicated to us because I think some of us were bringing that forward. And I thought we were bringing it forward. I was supporting them bringing it forward on that basis, which if you look at it, then that's, there, it's much closer to what the city's proposed plan is if you, if you look at the ten percent based on current, the current pay. So anyway, just something for us to think about.
Councilmember Melton?
The proposed budget actually exceeds a ten percent increase if you actually look at it. So just wanna be mindful of that. We, it, it is...
Not the one I'm looking at, but...
So...
Wait, excuse me. Hold on.
But I thought that was the option that we were supposed to look at. But anyway, okay.
Okay, I had, would you like to finish?
No, I just wanted to point out, if we're looking at the current pay, which the entry level for fire is thirty-nine, two, what we have proposed in the upcoming budget is forty-six, five, which is well above ten percent pay increase for that entry level pay.
It's nineteen percent.
Yeah.
All right, Councilmember Melton was next.
I yield to Councilmember Branch.
Councilmember Branch? Councilmember Branch?
Because what I was going to say is, if you take the thirty-two, the thirty-nine-two, and you add ten percent to that, that's forty-three-one-twenty. But the minimum that we're putting here is forty-six-five-forty. So, I mean, in that proposed budget, from, if theirs was, theirs, I'm assuming, had to be based off our current numbers, because they didn't have the proposed numbers, we're well over ten percent, almost twenty.
Councilmember Melton, and then Councilmember Buffkin.
Yeah, I was just going to ask, a moment ago, Madam City Manager, you forecasted that you had a request with.
Y'all let me get to it.
So I, yes, I'm curious to see what, what, what proposed compromise you have for us.
Well, thank you. I was going to get there eventually after we entertained everybody's question.
Can we just, Councilmember Buffkin had his hand raised.
Thank you, Mayor. So, so I think one point of confusion may be the percentage increases in the salary schedules versus percentage increases in what people actually make. So I think that may be a difference. I understand the salary schedules are going up or proposed to go up more than ten percent, but is that going to result in a ten-percent salary increase actually take-home pay? I think, I think that may be a point of confusion. But I do have a question about this idea. Well, first off, I think what we're talking about is doing things differently than we've done it in the past. And I don't really understand why a market-based study for police officers and firefighters has to be linked. I don't think people trade professions a lot. I think you're going out for different applicant pools, so therefore the market must be different for those two different types of employees. Why do they have to move together? Just because that's the way it's always been done? I understand there's a lot of work going into, if you change the minimum on a salary schedule to avoid compression problems and leapfrogging problems, you have to change the entire schedule. Sounds like a lot of work, but, you know, that's what we're here to do. So, so help me understand this a little better.
It's not about the work. We work hard every day. We're glad to do the work. But what I'm saying is, as a part of a market-based system, the market assigns a value to the job, based on education that is required, skill set, physical acuteness that is required, all of those things. And it assesses a value for every position that we have, and we have roughly two-hundred-and-eighty job classifications in the city. And as part of that market-based system, when you adjust, like positions, paramilitary positions, we look at police and fire in our organization. And so any adjustment because of how the market bases police and how the market bases firefighting, there is a different set of values placed on those positions, and it is higher for police than it is fire. And it's not unique to Raleigh. That is the job market in this country. So it's not to do, to make an adjustment, and we can make an adjustment on both. I'm not saying that we, that we shouldn't do one or the other, but if we were to do one, it would be irresponsible of me to support doing one without doing the other, particularly with all of the recruitment issues that we're having around police and a lot of the community tensions that we're having around police. And we're asking police, in addition to fire, to do more with less every single day. And so in that market-based system, it assigns a value to a job, every job in this city. And as the market is reflected, that's how we propose our pay on an annual basis. So if we were to go outside of, and we are outside of what we, what the market says us, based on how we've lost positions and lost employees over the last couple of years to the local market, that is why we went to the Wake County average plus six percent. What typically happens is other organizations in Wake County kind of sees, you know, kind of waits to see what Raleigh does, and then they adjust their pay based on what we do. So we started out at five percent, we bumped it up to six to get us above the Wake County average for each of those positions on police, fire, and emergency communications as well. We're also struggling in that arena as well, and that is still part of public safety. So it is, it's not a peer comparison, but you don't do one without the, without the other, because it's public safety. And you may recall, when we implemented the new plan, we had a public safety step plan that was pretty much unique to public safety. We had some general employees that were, were on the step plans, but we built the step plan around police and fire. Then that didn't work. They requested that we remove them off-step, but we use the same methodology on an annual basis to apply merits. And that's what we've continued to do, to get to the percentages of merit. So we don't value the jobs. HR staff every year sends out a survey to our peer, peers in North Carolina, our peers across the country, to see what they're paying as part of our market competitiveness. And then that assigns a value to each position that we have.
Now, do you have your summary?
Yes, that's a lot. So let's just recap. You know, this has been really, really hard, and to our public safety, you know, staff, there's not many hours that we're not thinking about how we can be mindful of the valuable work that we do. As an organization in this current environment, we are struggling, not only in public safety, we are struggling in IT, we're struggling in sanitation, we're struggling in Raleigh water, we're struggling in transportation, just to make sure that we, we maintain a competitive pay so that we can retain our good employees and recruit additional employees. And so with that in mind, I just want to remind everybody, we did the two-percent cost-of-living adjustment based on how good we were doing in this current fiscal year, as opposed to wait to the end of the year when the books close and look at capital reserves. We found the money to do that two-percent just as a stopgap for a moment in time to help our employees. So that was an across-the-board two-percent for everybody. Based on the increases and enhancements to the range minimums on public safety, in the proposed budget, there will be some additional increases based on the merit compounded with the two-percent cost-of-living adjustment. Most employees will recognize anywhere from a five-and-a-half-percent increase to a seven-and-a-half-percent increase this year alone, this calendar year. Some will be more than that if they are in those range adjustments wherein there is a bump up to get them up to the new ranges because we've made so many shifts and adjustments. In addition to that, because I see that based on the third quarter and providing that we don't have, I'm not going to say the R-word, but any type of major economic condition that changed where we are as a community, I think we will be in really good standing at the end of the closing of the fiscal year. So it will be my recommendation that we do some type of retention bonus, and a retention bonus that acknowledges, and we will work with both of the chiefs to figure out, like, which of those ranks that are the ones that they are losing the people the fastest. And we will obviously try to be in tune with that. It's a non-recurring expense. We'll have the money on hand and we can do it. We don't have to raise taxes to do it, and it will be another payment to our employees in real time. A one-time payment, it'll be in one lump sum, and it will not be something that's spread out over twenty-six payments over the calendar year. So in addition to that, we've got a commitment that we're also going to look at these positions like we always do each year. Each year, out of our two-hundred-and-eighty positions, we look at thirty, one-third of them, to see, to make sure that we're competitive in the market. We have a designated number of those positions dedicated to public safety on an annual basis. So there is a potential that people will go from five-and-a-half, seven-and-a-half percent this year to an additional five percent next year. So there's the possibility that someone could receive anywhere from seven-and-a-half to fourteen percent pay increases over the next two years. And obviously, if there's some shift in the market, even in our local market, then we would have the opportunity then to adjust this pay plan again next year. And I think, you know, if you all will give me the latitude, after we close out the books, I will work with the budget staff and work with finance. That's why I said, let's not spend it all on sidewalks. We will look at where we're most hurting in retaining employees and then give an additional increase to our staff that is so vital and critical to the work that we do every single day.
So just for clarification, we, when we approve this, we can ask you to look at continuing this for next year. So we do a minimum of a ten-percent increase, but it would be done over two years instead of one?
Sure.
Okay.
Question?
Councilmember Branch?
One of the big things I've heard too, and this was over the last four years, especially with our police has to do with take-home cars. And I believe the Chief Deck Brown made some steps towards that. But where are we with, with that? With the number of vacancies, I'm sure we have some vehicles currently that may be available.
Yes, so that is one of the additional incentive programs that we're working with Chief Patterson on as well. She's trying to figure out, based on the number of vehicles that she has at her disposal, at what point and what rank will those vehicles be given. So that is another one of her incentives that she's looking at rolling out in the next several months. Received some historical data from the clerk just this morning to make sure that the proposed plan doesn't contradict where we had started out the program years ago, in a sense that we're looking at distance away from the city, whether we'd be allowed to take them outside of Wake County and all of those. So she's working with those parameters right now, in addition to the referral program, in addition to the lateral programs. And we have also offered that same consideration to Chief Griffin on the fire side as well. If recruitment really becomes an issue for the fire department, that they could too also look at stepping, stepping in and setting up a lateral program.
Okay.
So more to follow, but you're right, as we have more vacancies, the capacity for the vehicles right now probably greater than it's ever been. So we won't have that large one-time purchase price. And, and let's be real honest, the turnaround time to purchase vehicles right now is really slow anyway. So she's looking at the availability of cars that she's not using on a frequent basis.
Okay.
Okay, do we?
Thank you.
Councilmember Buffkin?
Yeah, thank you. Last comment. I, I know this is a lot of work. And we've, we've asked a lot from the staff. I appreciate all the analysis and the reanalysis. You know, this comes to us as the manager's budget, but that, the fact that any member of the council or the whole council or a part of the council might have different ideas is not personal, is not meant to be a criticism of the manager. We've got a different role, and it's an important role to balance a lot of competing priorities. So I'm, I'm open to hearing about, about the possibility, but when I know that police officers and firefighters right now are watching us and trying to decide if they want to stay with Raleigh anymore, I think we need to get some details out, and we need to get them out quick, and we need to have an understanding of if it's actually going to solve the problem.
Sure.
But, but thank you for bringing, bringing the idea forward.
Absolutely. That's why we advanced the merits really quickly. That was as quick as staff. If we'd had our rather's, we'd have done it on July one, but our system wouldn't allow us to stand it up that quick. But staff has worked around the clock to be able to stand it up on August first. We couldn't do it for all four-thousand-plus employees, but we were firmly committed to doing it for public safety. So they will get their merits effective August first. And it's the manager's proposed budget, but everybody in this room plays a role in the development of this budget. All of the departments, all of our offices, all of our staff helps, as well as the community, to give us components and elements of the compilation of the proposed budget.
Councilmember Branch?
You, I know we talked today because our budget notes were geared towards police and fire, but can you speak to our other departments? I know we have some challenges in solid waste, and I always say this, if trash isn't picked up, we have a bigger issue. And, and it makes the jobs for police and fire even more difficult with trash sitting on the roads and things of that nature. So I understand they have some challenges there. Can you speak to how those have been addressed?
Yes, so HR and budget staff has worked very intently with solid waste services to look at their pay schedule and to look at those impacted positions. And so, yes, we have a fix for that as well. Last conversation was a couple of weeks ago, and they were very pleased with what we brought forward. So we'll be able to address most of that pay. And, and luckily, because as I mentioned, we have two-hundred-and-eighty-plus job classifications, we have some similar classifications across various departments. So we may have one job class that's also in transportation. So when we were doing it, so that we did not have ultimately unintended consequences, as we were looking at solid waste services, we also looked at those peer positions in other departments, and we're bumping them up as well, so that we're not creating an equity issue and that we're not doing it in isolation again. So, yes, we are addressing those issues. And let's be honest, you know, we're really struggling on the IT side. Our finance staff found out today, people are continuing, the great resignation is real. And COVID has done a lot of things outside of the health arena. It's done a lot of things to work and how work looks in the future. And I've said that on multiple occasions, but we've got to get creative and figure out how we continue to, to work really hard, to continue to provide the services that this community not only demands but expects. And so I think in this proposed budget, we kind of addressed that. But I also hope that if you will allow us a couple of extra months, once we get those out, the savings in from capital reserves, we'll be willing to bring forward something that is meaningful, something that is impactful, and it's not just going to be a hundred-dollar retention bonus, it is going to be something that is significant enough so that people can understand that we're trying to be fair and we're being equitable. And as your manager, it's my job to look out for all forty-three-hundred employees, and I'm going to try to do that to the best of my ability. And hopefully, people will keep spending money and sales tax revenue will keep going up, and we'll be able to do something significant in late summer, early fall.
So the idea would be looking at it then, but probably distributing bonuses, what, early December?
Probably before then, because they get the service awards in early December. We don't want to get that conflicted. That's almost like the old-school traditional longevity pay. So I don't want to mix people up and they get taxed too much and then they'd be mad at us about that. So we're going to try to do it in advance of the awards for service pay.
So November?
Yes, that will be our goal. And over the next several months, as we continue to track our payments as they come in, we'll be able to bring you back a framework of what we're looking at, and whether or not we'll be able to apply that across the entire organization, or if only, we're going to be able to only address some of those tension points in public safety.
So, and that is also one reason why we should just provide direction on the sidewalks, because we're going to have to make some decisions later, potentially.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
So, I'm, I'm not really clear where this leaves us. I, I am willing to withdraw Budget Note Six at this time. I think Budget Note Five addresses the, the whole situation in a more nuanced and more appropriate way. But where does that leave us with Budget Note Five?
So it will be part of the budget process after we go through next, the budget hearing is tomorrow night, and then we will have a budget work session next Monday, the thirteenth. And at that time, at four o'clock, council will take action on the budget, the overall budget.
Okay. Can we, can we have budget numbers on the firefighter's proposed minimum at that time?
Yes.
Can we make that happen?
So, again, the firefighters, the cost to add, the firefighter's proposed minimum is five-point-five million dollars. That has been calculated.
Okay.
So an additional five-point-five million dollars would need to be added to the proposed budget.
Right, and we just heard that we can't do that without also doing the police, too. So what's?
No, I said we shouldn't do that. We shouldn't do that.
What, right. Okay.
That would be a violation of our current policy.
Well, again, I, I think we're being asked to do something different, so, but that's neither here nor there. Can, can we get an idea of what it would cost us, so that we can make a decision?
Sure.
I mean, do, do whatever you got to do, all in. If you got to, you know, if you got to adjust the police, too, because of fire, because of the policy or whatever, can, can we see what it would cost us?
Sure.
Thank you.
Council, Councilmember Fort, and then Branch.
I think that was going to be my clarification, if you were going to bring it back to us, that you'd have to bring everything back to us if you're going to make those shifts. So I just wanted to clarify what you'd be bringing back next week.
And my question is, do you want it to do it on the current salaries or the proposed salaries? There's a difference. There's a mathematical difference.
Um.
And I think you want it on the current, because we haven't approved the proposed.
Well, I don't know. Starting pay fifty-two-nine-sixty-nine is fifty-two-nine-sixty-nine.
Okay.
Um, I'm not sure what you're asking me.
So you say you want it based on raising up to the minimums, the minimums of fifty-two? Is that what you're asking? Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, and we got that number. Like Mr. Bonapine said, we got that number for fire, it's five-point-five, and then the manager said, but our policy would require us, if we follow it, to also change the pl-. to also change the police. So what's the number on the police? That's the missing part. Well, I'm sure it would be. But we can't make a decision until we know what the number is.
That's why I said, okay.
All right.
Okay, any additional questions? Okay, thank you, everybody. This meeting is adjourned.